This is my people meeting area.
What happened to that?
Reporting in progress.
Don't forget to turn mics on.
Uh, okay, um, all right, it's six o'clock, um.
Awesome mention here.
Um. We're in the city council chambers, um. Uh, Yvonne, can you, uh, call roll?
Yes, George.
Here.
Buckles.
Rose.
McElroy.
Here.
Hebert.
Otterway, Towne.
Hodges. Hodges. Houston. And Flynn.
Here.
Okay, um, so, let's lead this, so, next public comment, um. I know we have one, I'll go ahead and read the. Yeah. Uh, okay, so, uh, the public comment, uh, portion of the agenda is the opportunity for the council to listen to the public, but not for dialogue. Public is allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city, the topic issued brought up may be referred by the council to the city manager for inclusion on a subsequent council agenda. Council has discretion to ask questions after comments are concluded. Please note complaints should first be addressed to the appropriate state department and or city manager prior to directly addressing the council. Um, so, I have one, um, Joe, I don't know, Yvonne, do you have any others?
No, I do not.
Okay. So, all right, Joe. I have another one.
Yeah, I always remember that. Uh, good evening, uh, chair of the council, uh, the honorable, uh, Mayor George, um, I am Joe Neely. I am a sheriff resident organ, and I also have an organization called West Valley Transparency. Um, the reason why I'm here is five, five topics. One is, uh, in response or regarding the water main that blew, um. There has been some people who have messaged me personally on my page that said that, uh, they felt that they didn't get enough notice, um, within twenty-four hours. Um, granted, the city did respond from my understanding on social media, but there are some family members that they said that don't have internet and don't have social media. That weren't a lot, uh, they didn't have access to that, um. And, uh, some residents who go to like, let's say, the grocery store or market, they only go very so often, so if it's possible that even if the city did post, or they did, they did post. Flyers about the, the bacteria, the unsafe water notice, um, that they're not gonna see that in time. Um, there was, uh, a family who messaged me that said that, um, that they did get the notice within twenty-four hours and their family got sick, but the, but the parent, the kids aren't sick, that's good. Another family member reached out to me and said that their kids got sick within that timeframe, they're hoping that's not related. Um, so I feel that. I am totally open to hearing if there's gonna be a potential discussion about having an alert system. Uh, to alert, uh, the people of Sheridan, and I would imagine a lot of people would love to be opted into that because a lot of people like to know what's going on with the city, granted, I know it's expensive. But I hope to hear if there's any dialogue. The second is the cooling center, um, for this year, um, I know that, I don't think it has been discussed yet, but I'm looking forward to hearing a discussion about that. Um, the third is, I'd like to know eventually the status on the rail fence that's on, uh, West Manam, Jim has been the advocate for asking, inquiring about that, um, that rail replacement. Fourth is, I'd like to eventually know the status of the Dresden Dog Park. Um, and five, I have noticed on the nineteenth, at eight minutes and twenty seconds into the video, there was a side discussion. That happened when every councillor had their head down looking through the pamphlets. Um, I just want to let you know that, uh, when I see that, it's discouraging and it's saddening to see there's side discussion going on. In a, a session when there's an agenda and it should be focused on one comfort, like, one topic. But I did want to let you know that that's something I have noticed. And that is all I have to say, Jim.
Question, uh, what were we looking at? We can say all of us, so what were we looking at, you know?
Looking at regarding to.
Oh, you said we all had our heads down.
Oh, oh, you're the pamphlet, so when everyone's going through the pamphlet, um, and that was like maybe twenty seconds of going through the pamphlet, everyone's head was down, and there was a side discussion that happened at eight minutes, twenty seconds into the video. And that might be about. Eight minutes and fifteen on the city's audio. Around there, 'cause I, I was running five seconds before the audio started.
You said on May nineteenth?
Uh, May nineteenth. It was like maybe a fifteen to twenty-second, uh, conversation. During open session, oh, let's.
Um, on the sickness, it may not be water-related because the water tested for no bacteria, so it was okay. But I've heard from many people in Mac that there's a new strain of COVID going out around, and it doesn't, when you use the COVID test, it comes out negative, but you, it, it's never very sick, so it's positive.
It could be that.
Yeah.
She's hoping it's not the, and then obviously because it tested clean.
Joe, what was that third point you was talking about?
The third point was the, uh, the fence on West Main Street, um, between Washington Street and the street that's next over.
With the car.
Yeah, that's where, um, that car impacted and there was a missing rail, um, and I think I said G E P non-replacement, but I haven't seen that yet.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Joe.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so. Next, right, it's not a presentation, but I think it's, uh, it's our work session, uh, topic, um, so, uh, Amelia's here from Jensen Strategies to talk about the group profile we have, here. Hi.
Hello, um. Thank you, Mayor, and it is very nice to see you all, council tonight, thank you for having me. As you all know, uh, my name is Amelia Wallace, I'm a senior associate with Jensen Strategies, and it's an honor to be assisting the, the council with this process over the next coming months. Um, it's great to be working with you again, we do, we like to repeat clients, we do like to do other work, so, well, um. Um, but it's been really good getting to know, uh, your community and everything that's happened, uh, in the last few years. Um, and I have to take a moment just to reflect, this is a little bit special for me because I believe this was my third recruitment when I started with the firm. Um, and so it's, uh, pretty incredible, I think, I didn't count again, but somewhere in the neighborhood of sixteen or seventeen cities that I've worked with since, uh, working with you all, and so, um, not that, as I said. So, uh, the purpose of this session tonight, as you all know, is to discuss the, um, draft, uh, profile that you have before you, as well as, uh, formally adopt the hiring procedures. Um, yes, this is to satisfy important legal requirements, so you and a council, as a council, can meet an executive session and all of that good stuff. Um, this process is also about presenting a roadmap to your community. Uh, it's about reaching consensus and developing a profile that, um, not only is a bellwether for the process and the, I call it the keystone document as we go through this work, something you can always come back to. Um, but I say it's also your public announcement of, of how you intend to go about this work, um, including, uh, public comments and, uh, including your different stakeholders. Um. So, before we dive into the review, uh, just a few expectations that you can have, uh, going forward, so. First of all, throughout the search, uh, as you, uh, no surprises here, that our objective is to, um, recruit a manager that has the core management skills and experience to be your city manager. Um, qualified, uh, vetted by our team. Um, what that means is not just having qualifications on paper, but specifically having the experience and knowledge to meet Sheridan's needs. Not Sheridan three years ago or ten years ago, but now. Um, so from our team, we'll be working hard, uh, to be positive representatives of your city, uh, of your community, um, we'll be working hard, diligently source and vet candidates. Uh, and run a robust ethical and legal res, uh, recruitment process. From you all, as a council, from your staff, from your community, we're asking you to be thoughtful representatives. Um, to be, uh, uh, thoughtful and sharing your, um, needs and hopes about your community, so we can, uh, attract, attract the best manager to meet those, meet those needs, um. We'll be doing as much as we can to facilitate this decision, but ultimately, it's your hard decision to make. I do appreciate I get to sit on this side of the table instead of yours. So, with that, a little bit about what's in your package, so, um, you have, uh, first, a cover sheet outlining the regulations and statutes that this will help satisfy. Uh, then, of course, we have the, the real star of the show tonight, the candidate profile, um, and then, of course, the hiring procedures. Uh, this is also part of statute, um, and I want to note that nothing about this has changed since the profile, the proposal that we submitted to you all. Uh, but I will, uh, call out a few key dates and reminders and happy to answer any questions. So. With that, before we start talking about the profile, any questions? All right. Um, so, as I mentioned, uh, this is a discussion draft. Um, I'm hoping that I have listened well to you, to your staff, to your community, uh, but ultimately, this is your prerogative to make this a profile that, that speaks to what you see as your community's needs. Um, as a note, our goal tonight will be to reach consensus on this profile. Um, I am hoping that the councillor Hebert makes it, but either way, I'll be following up with councillor Houston, uh, to see if he has any edits, we're gonna hope that we get as close as possible because it will be important. Uh, for your council to be in a position to adopt this document formally on June sixteenth, uh, so we can proceed into advertisement. Um. So, what I'll be doing tonight is doing a, a pretty detailed walkthrough, um, I'm hoping that everyone had the opportunity to read it and absorb a bit, but I will do a detailed walkthrough just to make sure that the council is aware of, of everything in the profile. Um, and I'll be seeking your edits, so what I hope to walk out of this room with is a, a solid, crystal clear understanding of any revisions that you need to see in this profile, uh, to be prepared to adopt on June sixteenth, I'll throw that date in one more time. Um. All right, so before I walk through just briefly, uh, a few points about the profile, uh, so this was developed, as you all know, based on interviews. Uh, and other factual information from staff, as well as a, a public input session, a community survey, and a staff survey. Uh, at the public input session, we had two attendees, uh, we did receive thirty-seven survey responses, uh, from the community, which was great to see. Um, and then we had thirteen staff, uh, submit surveys as well, so we were pleased to see some good feedback going into this. Um. And as I prepare to walk through the profile, uh, what we'll be covering is the minimum qualifications and preferred qualifications. Then we have a series of attributes that cover key skills and competencies that the next manager should have, uh, and then a little bit about the policy directives, the real projects that will really get a city manager excited to come and serve your community. So what I'll suggest is, uh, if the council's amenable, that you let me walk through the majority of the document, uh, if there's immediate clarifying questions or small things, please do go ahead and, and raise that, so we can address it then, but if it's a broader discussion, I'd ask that you hold it up your hands. Sound good?
Sure.
Excellent. A bit more of me talking and then I hope to hear from you all. All right. So. Beginning with a required minimum education experience, uh, we set that at three years of upper level government experience, um, as well as a prefer, a preference for a bachelor's degree. Now, I want to note, uh, the last sentence is very important, uh, something that came through loud and clear during the interviews is that you are seeking an experienced manager, you need someone who knows what they're doing, and maybe that's a degree, or maybe that's other kinds of experience. Um, so what, that last sentence about, um, considering equivalent combination of experience is our ability to make sure that you're not missing out on candidates that can do the job well. As far as preferred, uh, five or more years of increasingly responsible experience in an advanced degree, as well as a specific knowledge of budget and finance, major public works, as well as downtown revitalization. Now proceeding through the desired skills and attributes, I'm gonna hit some of the, the key points here, um. So, as I mentioned, it came through loud and clear that you are looking for an experienced manager, manager, uh, someone who is ethical, forward-thinking, um, of course, their most important job is with staff, leading your great team of staff. Um, so effectively delegating, maintaining accountability, et cetera, uh, of course, being a strong project manager and problem solver, um, able to meet your regulatory and resource, um. Work within your regulatory and resource constraints while accomplishing the key projects that you need to accomplish. Um, diplomatic and personable, this came through in a number of ways, as you'll see in the, towards the end of this bullet, but you're hoping for a positive manager who can bring some enthusiasm and, and personability. Uh, along with their proactive, accountable, and professional style. Um. And that relates not only to their work with, with staff and with the city, but also out into the community. Moving on to the next bullet, council relations, so this is one of their most important jobs, they are your key staff person that help you act as an effective policymaking body. Uh, so as such, uh, the next city manager is expected to cultivate a productive and cohesive and more organizational environment, helping you navigate the complex civic decisions that are ahead of you. Uh, being knowledgeable and confident while also humble, uh, is important, exhibiting strong interpersonal abilities, um, all of these are gonna be, uh, are things that you've expressed a desire to have, uh, in your next manager, who is, um. Giving you regular communication, providing appropriate professional recommendations, um, all of which in an ethical, transparent, responsive, uh, way. Of course, uh, maintaining awareness and, um, supporting the city's legal and, uh, regulatory obligations is essential as well. Uh, next, understanding the city government roles, of course, having a strong understanding of your form of government is essential. Uh, they're not just helping you as a council perform well in your role within the government, but also all the pieces of this, uh, this puzzle from your staff to, um, the other partners that you work with. Um. Moving on to the next bullet, uh, communication, um, no one was surprised that this came through in every category. Every category is one of the most important quali- qualities that this next, uh, manager needed to have. Uh, so an ability to leverage their skills to strengthen relationships, uh, clearly prioritize and champion community needs, um. A few other traits that came through, again, being, uh, transparent and honest in that communication, uh, interpersonal skills and emotional intelligence also came through strongly here as well. And that applies to a wide range of folks, right, everyone from, um, residents, business owners, community organizations, to your elected officials, uh, regional partners. Um, also, uh, valuing open dialogue and information sharing, uh, practicing active listening, um, and really going back to that humility, approaching all engagements with empathy and respect. Um, this is a sentence that we always love, communication, both verbally and written, uh, offered with clarity, substance, and breadthly as much as possible. Whoa, hang on, to the next page, um, public finance, so this is another critical area, you can't do, uh, much with what you don't have, so. Um, demonstrating excellent public finance skills to effectively support community needs and ensure, um, s- sustainability as well as high-quality city services. Uh, this includes strategically integrating financial planning throughout the city, right, uh, into your long-term goals, uh, using a broad range of revenue approaches. Um. An ability to respect the, um, taxpayers' dollars and use them in a fiscally prudent manner, and importantly, communicating effectively about decisions that may impact, um, members of the community. Uh, of course, grants were a, a high, high-interest area, uh, so research, writing, uh, managing, managing grants, et cetera, is seen as a, a valuable thing, um, and of course. Experience with working a budget and lots, always helpful, but really what I heard again is that strong record of innovative, um, both management and re- revenue generation strategies wherever that was. Moving on to public infrastructure, um, you have an excellent public work directs, director, but there are a number of key projects that the, uh, city manager, of course, will be expected to be a strong leader of. Uh, so as such, uh, they should possess a solid understanding and familiarity with, uh, large, complex capital projects, uh, for infrastructure ranging from waterways, water and roadways. Um, experienced leading multifaceted projects, um, while managing costs and ensuring long-term compliance with regulatory requirements, of course, is going to be, uh, important, their ability to support staff in that work particularly. And again, public finance coming, coming up again, the ability to creatively finance these projects, um, with sensitivity to impact on taxpayers as well. Um, again, we'll talk about intergovernmental partners as well, but, uh, the ability to operate well with them, again, as part of their product management, um, also essential. Moving on to community economic development, this was another one that really stood out, um, the, the phrase that just came, came up everywhere is, gosh, Sheridan just has so much potential. Only we had someone to help us unlock that, so, um, as such, uh, the ability to serve as a strategic, creative, and effective advocate for a community. Um, so helping, uh, attract and facilitate new business, um, that really reflects both Sheridan's goals and their character. Um. Also with regards to appropriate infrastructure, so welcome councillor. Um. Just finishing this bullet, uh, so. There we go, um, so facilitating successful development activity, um, also sensitive to your, uh, community's unique challenges related to wetland development is important. Um. And an ability to, uh, as part of this process, build and maintain effective relationships with businesses, development stakeholders, and others, uh, to really achieve your goals, uh, to get those locally-based amenities, uh, businesses that you desire. Um. Of course, uh, knowledge related to planning, economic development, uh, community vision development, uh, as well as, um, updates to city code, uh, all relevant pieces of experience there. Um. And welcome councillor, so right now we're walking through the draft candidate profile that you all received, uh, we just, uh, reached page four and are talking about, about to start talking about intergovernmental relations. Um, and I'm happy to.
We didn't talk about this.
And, uh, uh, once we get through the rest of the profile, I'd be happy to, to hear any other feedback you have on the beginning. So, with that, still subsequent. All right, so interg- intergovernmental relations, um, you have key local and regional partners, it's important this person can work effectively with, um, not only working effectively with them, but also representing your city, uh, the way that you want it to be represented. Um, so both in local and regional initiatives, as well as upholding, uh, service agreements, um, for key public services. Uh, an ability to help advance the city's interests while, um, while ma- maintaining, uh, strong relationships with clear, uh, strategic and effective partnerships is important. Uh, and of course, as I mentioned, skills to effectively collaborate, um, and find mutually beneficial opportunities for Sheridan and West Valley communities. Moving on to human resources, of course, we've touched on this a little bit with leadership and management, but, uh, beyond just staff management, additional, uh, skills and experiences related to human resource management is helpful. Uh, specifically related to developing workplace policies and other accountability measures that really help you be the professional, um, modern city organization that you're striving to be. Uh, so experience of providing, as a manager, providing clear expectations, fair treatment, as well as mitigating risk is important. Um, of course, that also includes effectively managing budgeting for personnel, um, staffing, of course, and continuing to provide, uh, ongoing learning, so, um. Mentorship, feedback, and professional development, uh, of course, experience working with unions, also very, very attractive. Moving on to community engagement, uh, of course, this is another important area for the city, um, who also largely related to, uh, communication, but, um. The city manager is expected to enhance the city's work to inform and really promote constructive conversation on key civic issues, um, to encourage, uh, involvement, um. And as I mentioned, productive, community-building forms of civic part- participation that, uh, help resolve issues and foster trust. Um. Experience facilitating, facilitating meaningful community dialogue and consensus building, um, again, around some of the key decisions that you have before you. Uh, and again, coming back to serving as a positive representative of your city, uh, being even-handed, trustworthy, open to new ideas, and humble. All right, last attributes, um, and also, maybe the most important, appreciation of your community. Um, as a high-profile leader, uh, you're expecting your manager to demonstrate the authentic care and respect for the residents of, residents of Sheridan and the future community. Uh, that, that motivates you all to show up here, up here every Tuesday. Um. Uh, team mentality is something that came through strong, helping folks work together well and really meet that potential that you all seem to see, um, see, you all see. Um, embracing a small-town feel and a small community, uh, and the benefits of being, uh, an active participant. So with that, uh, I will walk through the policy directives, um, I'm going to go through these at a higher level because you all talk about these every meeting. Um, but I want to make sure that we're representing these challenges well, uh, and if there's any other contextual information that you think it's important for the next manager to consider. Uh, so first of all, no surprises, a number of infrastructure-related product, uh, projects, um, whether that's upgrades or expanding capacity or maintenance. So, beginning with, uh, Stony Mountain, um, key asset that the city is hoping to unlock, uh, looking for a number of, uh, creative opportunities to, uh, get that online and make sure that that's a critical part of, uh, Sheridan's, uh, water, ongoing, uh, water supply. Uh, next, uh, looking at upgrading sewer infrastructure, uh, so increasing the capacity as well as making sure that the city's able to, uh, stay within its, um, permit, uh, discharge allowances. Also, again, looking at financing and, um, effectively managing ratepayer impacts. And then finally, uh, this was a very common, common theme, improvement of Sheridan Road, uh, so among other roadways, this was a, a key one, um, uh, seeking opportunities to fully finance the, the full suite of repairs that this, that is, um. The road needs in a, uh, financially effective and strategic way. Uh, next, downtown revitalization and business attraction, uh, back to that potential, um, so, there's a, a wealth of, of opportunities here, um, for the right businesses with the right support, so. Um, the, the excitement and eagerness for revitalization came through in space, um, but not just any place, something that really matches Sheridan's character. Um. A number of recent challenges have been noted, uh, in terms of, um, achieving those goals and getting businesses locked, et cetera, that some, that need, uh, additional support. Uh, but overall, speaking to that strong planning, relationship building, and, uh, representation of your community that's needed to, uh, meet your downtown revitalization and business goals. So, with that, I'd like to, uh, pause and see what feedback the council has and any key areas that they'd like to discuss.
I noticed, uh, with the exception of the required minimum education slash experience, uh, every air review ends with highly desired, um. Important. Uh, things like that, but the guy that, it's not required, and, uh, looking through the preferred education experience, you've got the, uh, knowledge of public budget and finance. I think that should probably go up as the required area because, uh, this is the perfect example, we got Preston that came in here at the last minute. If he hadn't come in here with budget knowledge, we have a problem, we have a big problem. Therefore, I think, uh, we'd wanna let anyone applying for this job know that, uh, Sheridan isn't a rich city, so we need to be good with our pennies, and you need to know. It should be required to know how to work with a budget, if they don't. It, uh, isn't just highly desired, it's, it should be required, in my opinion.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hearing a, a, a suggestion to potentially move, um, we could move that whole set of additional, um, attractive areas, if you want, or just the budget, um, up into the required minimum. Is that something that the rest, that resonates with the rest of council?
Budget's more important than the others, I mean, they're all important, but the budget is very important.
I don't think any of the others need to be moved, but budget probably, I couldn't even see us approving in Canada without budget experience, so it might as well be higher up, yeah.
I'm looking for agreement with the rest of council.
Yeah.
Well, the one thing about budgets, I don't know if all cities do their budgets the same, and I know that our books, a lot of screw up, mostly because they kept changing it. And I know that our books, a lot of screw up, almost because they kept changing it. So I mean, I know how to balance my, I know how to balance my books. But you know, to what degree? I mean, basic, I wouldn't say anything too mandatory because we might be using a whole different set. Than somebody else does and then we're just kind of looking for somebody that, you know, we're just gonna. Simple knowledge of how a budget works. I don't think it has to be so intense because each city probably does their budgeting different, just like their, run their cities different. So I'm gonna put, you know, yes, you should know how to do fundamental budgeting, I would think.
Yeah, and, and thank you for that councillor. So one, and I do want to just emphasize the last sentence here in the required minimum of education. That, yeah, they have budget skills that are a little bit different, that we need to be reapplied in a different way in Sheridan. That that's something that can be acknowledged as well in their applications.
And because I've been a bookkeeper and every place I was a bookkeeper for, except for the guy who owned both the grocery stores, they all did their books different. And then you have to learn that, that the basic skills were there and I just had to overlay it on the way they wanted it done. And I would think the city would be a lot more complex than that.
I'd like to ask Preston, is budget set up mandated by the state? We get these state lines to come out in every category and we go through them. Is that not how all cities work out initially, starting at your budget?
Yes, Oregon local budget laws leave, leave very little to the imagination. Your experience gives you skills to navigate through all that, but the structure's the same for every city.
Alright, Liz.
I would like to add for, 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 preferred grant writing experience. We, I mean, if we get someone in here, if we want to attract businesses and, and project, and get projects done. Then I think that we need someone that has some good writing skills. And maybe not necessarily frame it up as grant writing, but you know, some, I don't know how you would say that, but have fairly decent writing skills.
I think on the, which, which bullet was that under that, that talked about grant writing?
Oh, that was under public finance.
Okay.
And, and councillor. To clarify, were you asking to add that to the, this, this short preferred education experience letter?
Yes, I think it's important that, that, that the person has grant writing or research skills.
Are you saying preferred though, or are you saying?
Yes.
Required, okay.
Yeah, oh, prefer or required.
Yeah, cause I, we, I mean, cause I think in the bullet says preferred.
It's, it's attractive.
Okay. But I mean, if, if we're wanting to vote at the top, then I think it would need to say required. Well, I guess they could still say preferred at the top. Doesn't have to say required.
And just.
Kind of like the top. But go ahead.
I was just sorry, just to clarify, we are talking about these two bullets here, right? So just, it would just be which paragraph that would go into there and, and as part of the list, is that right?
I don't know, what do the other councillors think?
Yeah.
So I definitely agree with that because prior to Heidi being here. We didn't have any, our other manager, when I asked him, how come we're not, you know, writing grants because, because I don't want to? And that's, she brought a lot of money in for us and she tapped into things that we weren't even aware of. And it was a great asset, I think we were spoiled by it actually. So I think that grant writing or knowledge of grant writing, that would be something that would almost make that mandatory. Because being a little town in a depressed area, I hate to say it, but you can get money for that in grants. So use the language they like, that would be a real good asset for us.
Good, but.
And also I'm sure that you're gonna, if we say research and grant writing skills, that we're gonna get someone that's a little smarter than the average bear too, so.
That is the goal. And if I could make one point that I neglected to make earlier. You know, we often get feedback about our profiles that, boy, that sounds like Superman. Who really has all of these skills? And so the qualification that we made there is that. We haven't found one yet, maybe, maybe they're out there, someone who actually ticks all of these boxes a hundred percent. But what you're really gonna be looking at is a person who has the best combination, right? The best combination of these different skills and attributes. So just keep that in mind as you're going through that. You'll be applying those, those criteria that are in here on the, the candidates we've got earlier.
But whatever we say in the preferred or required are, are basically the core values that we want or the core skills we're under.
Yeah, that adds you, allows you to add just a little extra thumb, thumb on the scale. But you know, of course, everything in the profile is what I understand you're looking for. Yeah.
Maybe it can even be in the same sense as the, the finance. You know, like finance, city budget finance required. I don't know how to phrase it, but something, something about grant writing and research and preferred or something like that.
Experience successfully researching, writing and managing grants. They have it. And another, and other public and public finance, we could add it to.
Yeah. Would, so adding of, of experience with public budget and grants into the required education, would that meet what you're looking to do? I can make that change?
Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor, I do want to make sure you had an opportunity, if there are any parts of the, the first part of the profile that we walked through. As they're going on, please feel free to.
Thank you.
Ask any questions and whatnot.
You did tell us that it'd be a little late in term, yes, you passed it. Six o'clock meetings are all for, for me very well. I think I'm the only one that's working, I was, I don't know, maybe Peter works. Maybe.
Maybe.
I mean, not you, because I know you're working, that's good.
Okay. I was looking for any other questions for the, the profile.
Yeah, any other questions on the attributes, the policy directives, et cetera. As I mentioned, we want you to be confident in this document. So June sixteenth, it's a triumphant stamp. And you're gonna be with this profile for what? That's how we judge our applications, is that, I guess councillor?
On appreciation of Sheridan. Can you not mandate that they live in town? Because I think it's, would be beneficial that the city manager lives here in an emergency situation. So, and I didn't notice it in here, it just says, you know. Well, there, and there's another place, but it never says that you actually live in town. Yet, is that illegal to mandate that someone live where they work?
So you actually, as I understand, that is a requirement of your charter. Most city councils, some city councils require that and uphold it. Some will have it in their charter and choose to, if they need some flexibility. I've understood from the majority of you that that's something that you feel strongly about.
Yes.
You've anticipated that I wanted to ask the council. I was hoping to, to ask the council if there were a candidate that that was an issue for, if that's something that the council would like to discuss. Or simply a hill breaker, which is your prerogative.
In the charter.
What's on the charter?
Well, what, what does it say in the charter? You, you can't require it or?
No, the, they require.
Within one year.
I see, okay.
Does it say in town or within thirty minutes?
Yeah, town.
Kind of councillors.
For emergency reasons, is that why it's in the charter?
I mean, that was written, I, I guess that's when they added it to the charter, because it's been revised a couple of times, but. It's just in the, or cell phones, I guess.
It's just in the code of the charter. We don't have anything in our charter about the city manager.
Is it the, oh, so there's, there's nothing in the code?
From the ordinance?
It's in the ordinance of the charter.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
But if someone wanted to live in Willamette, I mean, we, we would have the option of discussing that if they were close by, right? Or is it, is it absolute that they would have to live in Sheridan?
I mean, if we're gonna follow our code, it sounds like, yeah.
I think those, that's one of those sentences we can cross that bridge when we come to it. Because we're deciding who we want. And if we find an excellent candidate and they want to live within thirty minutes, we can decide if that's a deal breaker or not. I think they should know ahead of time what we would really, really, really like them to be in town, but. And if they've checked all their boxes, I think we're gonna be willing to go with, no. They could be here quick, yeah, that's worse.
Then we have to change the ordinance.
And then change the ordinance is easier than changing the charter.
We never have any problems doing that.
Yeah, thank you councillor, and that's exactly what I'm, I'm looking for direction on. Is if, if there's a candidate that's strong, that just says, no, I really, I just couldn't do it, I'm happy to be within thirty minutes. I can just tell them, thank you so much for your interest, I wish you the best in your search, or I can bring that conversation up to council. And so that's what I'm, what I'm asking.
So what I hear you saying is, for now, you have the ordinance that gives you the direction of wanting a manager that's gonna live in the city after a year. You have the ability to modify that later, but for now, that's what it is.
And, and I'm seeing, I'm gonna infer from the nods that, you know, say that candidate comes around that. I should bring that up with the council and let you know so you can make a decision based on that, is that correct?
I think so.
Excellent. And one other piece of information, so I think we all are aware that this will be turned into a beautiful graphically enhanced profile. Where we'll have more information about the city requirements like that, et cetera. But a lot of the work that, that all we do is also having conversations with folks. Communicating the status, answering questions, et cetera. So this is very helpful for me.
So I just want to make sure that, you know, if, because right now Sheridan's such a discussed area. And I think if somebody had a family and if they could live at Mac, they would. But I would prefer the preference to be in Sheridan because that's, we can just all suffer through it together. I mean, you know, to promote, because I'm really into the revitalization of the downtown area. And I know that this, this little village is gonna grow. And I live here and I don't have a problem with it and I have to travel if I want to go do certain things. So I'm not saying it's mandatory, but I wouldn't mention it unless it was a real, you could say, well, I can mention it to them. That hopefully that won't be a deal, because if you could wiggle out of it, I'm sure they would.
I definitely hear there's a strong preference for the candidate to be in town. And just a willingness to consider potential if someone else goes along with it.
Can I also mention your, and Tyler, you may know this, but I'm under the impression that you can't require residency unless it's in your charter. So we'll double check that.
Yeah.
We will double check that.
That's what I was asking.
That's my question.
Any other discussion of the attributes or policy directives? Excellent, well, I will make the change that we discussed of adding a public finance and grant experience to the required. Education and the rest of the, the profile will be a stand pending any final comments from councillor Houston. Excellent, thank you, alright. So on to our next discussion related to the profile. I need to ask for some direction on salary. So as you know, when we promote this position, we'll be sharing a range. So what we're looking for, actually first, let me say, remind our objectives, right? So I've heard from you all that you are looking toward experienced manager. With core management skills and experience to, to meet your, your community needs. So we did not, so what we typically do is we provide a range, typically in the, the about thirty thousand range. And what that is, is a dependent on qualifications. The goal of that is to say, hey, yes, we're willing to pay up to this amount for that seasoned candidate. Who's really top tier and really meets your needs, right? But by having enough of a span within that range, you're also giving the opportunity for earlier career folks, right? Who might have some of those core skills that you may need to put a little bit more time and development into. But have what you need to do the job. So the goal of that range is to hit that sweet spot of, of being able to attract the high-tier candidate. As well as the, the up and coming and pay them accordingly. So we did not do a formal salary assessment, but we do this work a fair amount. So I wanted to share a few bits of information for you and then a recommendation for you to discuss about the salary range. So first of all, I wanted to share that three years ago, we did this process. We advertised at a range of a hundred to a hundred and thirty thousand a year, plus benefits, of course. I understand that currently you have set aside up to a hundred and fifty thousand in your upcoming bu- budget of commensurate salary. Up, yeah, up to a hundred and fifty thousand. I also wanted to share that in the most recent League of Oregon Cities Salary Study, that the average. Salary for a city manager was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Interestingly, just because I find this fascinating, that's eighteen percent, twelve percent up from twenty eighteen. But actually less than it would have been with just pure inflation. I just find that very interesting. And unsurprisingly, small cities are being forced to compete with larger cities, to really attract top-tier candidates. It's challenging, but it's true. We're seeing it across the board. And then just briefly, in our recent experience, so actually the last city manager recruitment that, that I led in this area was the Dayton City Manager Recruitment last year. Which did advertise a hundred to a hundred and thirty. Now, they're not quite your size, they're about a third of it, maybe a little less. And the city really had some attractive elements that made it great to sell, et cetera. But I will be candid that that's a challenging range sometimes. That can be a real impact on your ability to recruit high-tier candidates. Two other recruitments that we're currently running for cities that are, one slightly bigger and one slightly smaller than you. The city of Traptale is currently advertising with a salary of a hundred and seventy thousand to two hundred and ten. We actually got the biggest pool of city manager candidates that we've seen since almost twenty sixteen with that. We're also advertising for the city of Toledo, a population of about three and a half thousand. So again, a bit smaller than you, at a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So based on these factors, our goal here is to make sure that you're being financially responsible, but also positioning your recruitment for success. So the range that I would like to suggest for the council to consider is a hundred and twenty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand. If there is an appetite to potentially negotiate up to a hundred and sixty or to have some flexibility for the right candidate. That can be helpful, but I think a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty would put you in a, in a solid position.
Well, we've heard that you've got a hundred and fifty thousand post in the budget. I'm surprised at that, but based on the facts, the figures you just gave out. Looking at the average for all the cities and that Toledo, which is smaller than us. Is advertising a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty-five, I think a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand is. I don't know, that's a lot of money, but I think it's, we have to do it. It's not necessarily what we want to do, but what else can we do if we want to attract new candidates? My opinion.
Lucy.
So I think that. You know, after six months, look at their performance. Because some of those towns like Traptale, I don't know exactly, I mean, I went to Toledo when they were in school, but I can't remember where it's at, but.
Near Newport.
Yeah, so it's like along the coast and Traptale's along the Columbia River Gorge. And right now, we're just right here. So prove to me that you can do something in this little village and we'll give you a raise if you sit there and suck your thumb.
There'll probably be, you know, language in there that's. It's not very fashionable, you know, because, because that's, that's I think what the previous contract was, was after six months, there was an increase.
I know, so why start high? I mean, you know, there's a flexibility, but. I know. So why start high? I mean, you know, there's a flexibility, but it's, this is a tough little area, like getting appraisal by some real estate. They just think it's gonna be a slam dunk like it is in MAC and all these areas. When you come to Sheridan, you have to work for your money, and they don't like coming here because they don't like to work for it. So I end up working for them and then I give it to them for free so that I validate the prices that we have. But I don't wanna be doing somebody else's work for them. I get tired of doing that. So I wouldn't want that to, oh, yeah, I'll take that and, you know, that's it. So however you wanna state that, is how I feel about that. What was, you know, I would probably discuss again, just a little, if you started out three years ago and the increments that we had, if you could just remind me of those increments. Because every time she excelled to the standard that we were asking for or more. And what if we don't have that same kind of energy?
I think three years, well, it sounds like we advertised.
I know, you know, yeah, things change with inflation and all that, but, you know, just in general.
I think we advertised for, yeah, it sounds like last time, one hundred or one thirty, and I think the first contract might have been for one eighteen. I wasn't part of that.
It was close to one twenty.
Okay, so close to one twenty.
I think it was like real close to that.
And then I think the last negotiation changed to about one thirty, yeah, one thirty four. So that did get us going with the bump. So it sounds like we started at one eighteen, and, you know, it sounds like that was up to the council's discretion with, you know.
But we did compromise, you know, and those raises were, so. I think she had them for every six months for about a year, didn't she, or so? Because it seems like she gave her a couple raises. I wonder if you get on council.
One, three.
Oh, sorry.
Lucy, you have to take into consideration that's three years down the road and the economy right now. People need more money in order to survive. So we have to up, we have to up the ante a bit to attract the right candidate.
I said, council, let me, this has changed and I said that, so I'm not really sure what that is. That would be a fine ass question.
So what did you recommend, one twenty to one fifty?
Yes, council.
That seems fair to me considering, you know, that.
Well, then, I think there's, I mean, negotiable. I think language is right in there, so.
That's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
We negotiated that initial salary and the initial bump. And if we decide that, okay, we really, really, really want this person, and they want a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're advertising that range. Okay, don't promise them a bump in six months. Say, okay, you got the job at a hundred and fifty, that you get a raise.
A ten year contract.
Yeah, that's the thing. Things like that, but offering that range, that will, I'm sure they must know that it's negotiable. I'm sure anybody applying for a job to use a range is like, well, I can hope for the highs, but I might not get it. So it's negotiable.
And I was gonna say, prior to Heidi, when Frank was city manager, even his COLAs were negotiated outside of what the regular staff COLAs were. So they were handled completely independently from the staff for the city manager. Heidi's contract had it where she got whatever the staff got, but even the COLAs can be handled separately.
Uh, Pierre?
I'd like the range as presented, mainly because I think we're all primarily concerned with the quality of the candidate. And someone who is good at their job and knows it simply won't apply if the range advertised too low. So I'd like to start in the higher range, especially since salaries across the border are often, it is different than even two or three years ago.
I guess. I don't know. Danny, what do you think?
Yeah, I like this, the one twenty to one sixty. Or one fifty, I'm sorry. I like the one sixty. I think that's a pretty good wage. You know, one sixty more than the governor makes. Still salary wise. I think, you know, our town had over, claimed to be six thousand, but two thousand are over here behind bars, so. That helps us tax wise. So, yeah.
Okay. Oh, that sounds good then. Sounds like everybody's, you can check with Ian, but it sounds like we've got a consensus then for that.
Excellent. Thank you, mayor, and thank you, council. And as a, that's a perfect segue into talking about the, doing a quick highlight of the next steps in this process. But I will say, just briefly on the topic of contract negotiation, so yes, once you reach your, decide upon your preferred candidate, that's when you'll have all of these questions, right? Whether there's, there's all kinds of different incentives, benefits, other things that the candidate and the council can negotiate to reach an agreement. And that'll be something that we are happy to assist with if desired, but your city attorney, Tyler, will be your core resource there. So thank you, Tyler. Happy to help as needed. Okay, so just briefly, mainly I want to zoom in on the dates because that is the most important part. So just as a quick overview, so this presents the process basically from this point. We skipped over the steps that we've already done. So from here, as I mentioned, we'll be taking this information from the candidate profile and turning it into a graphically enhanced recruitment brochure similar to the one that you had last year. Actually, I'm very excited. We've got some beautiful pictures of your communities, some new ones. So looking forward to that. Then we'll move into advertising. I will advertise for four weeks between, drum roll, June eighteenth and the twenty first. That is why the June sixteenth adoption is so important, because I found out, which is if this profile is not adopted, I will not start advertising on June eighteenth. So that's your warning.
I put one here. It says June seventeenth, November sixteenth.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Um, perfect.
That's in there for you, Jim.
I beat you, Jim.
Well, I beat you, Yvonne.
Overall, all right, I'll certify this. Hi, so as I mentioned, we'll move into advertisement. So we have a robust slate of websites and tools that we use to advertise. I'm happy to answer any questions about those, but I can say the most important one is our network and that's all. We directly outreach to qualified managers that, once we know your community and have a sense of what you're looking for that we think might be a good fit. So beyond the kind of passive recruiting, we'll be doing a lot of dialing and having conversations and then trying to represent all the opportunities here. Yes, council.
So do you advertise more in the Pacific Northwest or nationally?
Great question. National, but we always have a few extra in the Pacific Northwest. We have a good network here, but we really do have a national network of city manager candidates that we engage with, whether that's folks who have, who want to come to Oregon and that's been a goal of theirs, or folks who have moved out of Dayton, we still maintain connection with, so. Yeah, so then, once we, the application period closes, we have a team of retired public administrators that we work with. Really can't wait to introduce you to the two folks that'll be helping with this process. And they will review the applications and select a shortlist to interview via Zoom. From that point, we will then bring a summary of all of the interviews that we conducted and present them to council along with a recommendation of a slate of finalists to actually bring into your community in that finals week. Once the council has selected the slate that they would like to move forward with, we'll proceed into professional reference checks as well as formal background checks. And then the most exciting part, which is having all these folks in your community. So that's where I wanna come to the dates here. So as I mentioned, we'll be advertising from June eighteenth to July twenty first. We'll then be bringing all of those candidates back to you, council, on August fourth. From there, we'll be, the finals week is slated for Monday through Thursday. Now, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call out specific times that we're hoping for you all to be here, because you do have a big role, but thankfully, some other folks will be working too. So on that Monday, we're gonna have receptions for both employees as well as the public. We ask that you, we encourage counselors to attend the community input session. Typically, it's like around six o'clock that night. As observers, you'll have your own opportunity to interview the candidates, but you get the opportunity to see how they engage with your community. We do ask that council do not attend the staff reception. Then on Tuesday, we'll have panel interviews with community leaders, peer administrators, et cetera. And then you'll have your opportunity on Wednesday to interview the council. So on Tuesday, don't need to worry about that day. That'll be when you have your panels doing your interviews. We'll summarize those results and then present them for you in your deliberations. Yes, council, go.
It seems like last time around that we weren't expected to attend or make any suggestions during the panel interviews, but we were allowed to just listen.
I don't think so. Not to the panel interviews. The panel interviews.
Are they via Zoom or not?
They were not Zoom, no. They were different, three different locations in the city, and they were, the candidates were moving from one location to the next. The, their peer group, the community group, and.
We didn't have a staff panel, so I think it was just those two.
That's right. So it's those two because it was the pandemic, so, yeah.
Um, how many finalists are there usually?
Great question. We're scoped to bring up to four, and I can say from experience that even if you wanted to bring five, that would save a lot to interview. So we're scoped for up to four. We typically get two to four candidates. Great questions. Last thing on the schedule, then I would love any other questions. So as I mentioned, Wednesday, August twenty seventh, that is a full day commitment where we'll, you'll be interviewing all of your candidates up to an hour and a half each. And then the next day, we'll come back for deliberations. That's another one. We typically start in the morning and we ask that you stay flexible. We have records on both ends, shortest deliberation and longest deliberations. We don't try to set records anymore. But as I said, Wednesday and Thursday, those are key days to, we'd appreciate you going ahead and making sure it's locked off on your schedules. So with that, I already covered salary negotiations. Any other questions about the process?
Yeah, I just wanted a kind of good reminder for all the council. I got asked by one counselor about recruiting a particular person or advertising in a particular place. Through Amelia, we can do all that, but it's not for the council to initiate this contact. It's gotta be through our recruiter. Particular people or places, the place ads, you know, you can mention to me or Amelia directly, and you have to remain objective.
And it's the same reason why we're not at panel interviews, so we can be objective and we're not hearing in, info ahead of time. We're all hearing that statement. Uh, Yvonne, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to confirm, when you got the, the last thing on your regular session, the selection announcement, I am guessing that on Thursday, August twenty eighth, we're coming out of executive session into regular session to make the announcement.
Thank you, Yvonne. Absolutely.
It's the same date, just in case you're wondering. Yes.
Unless we set a record long deliberation, it might have to be a different day.
Well, I don't know. We did have one council basically decide they were pretty sure, but they wanna have one more conversation, so that went to Monday. So I, we haven't actually counted that as our longest deliberation, have we? And thinking about it, so the goal will be after that session to go ahead and announce in public session who you decided to hire. We know small towns, information travels quickly, and you wanna be the ones to share that message. Sorry, Yvonne, re-try.
And I have one other suggestion that the mayor and council may want to consider, is that technically you would be having a council meeting that Monday, but considering your staff is heavily involved with this, they're probably not going to have the opportunity for prepare. And nor would I necessarily think that the council would be up for one more session on the first or second of September. So you might wanna consider canceling.
It would be the third because that's Labor Day.
It would be Labor Day.
So it's the second, the first, the first, yes.
The second, September second.
So it would be a work session on Tuesday, but I think something, that's something to consider.
Yeah, you might not have the stamina as being after the holiday.
Well, actually, in September, the two sessions are the eighth and the fifteenth.
No, it's the second, the second.
Oh, really?
And the fifteenth.
So what is the timeframe for the twenty seventh and the twenty eighth? Should we block out nine to four or?
Great question. For the, for Wednesday, for the panel interviews, it would be ideal to do, yeah, nine to four. And then on that Friday, or the Thursday during deliberations, definitely the morning. And then we ask that you just stay flexible through, you know, lunchtime. Just depends again how conversation goes. We'll have at least an hour, sometimes a little bit more of presentation where we'll be sharing all the information from the other panels, sharing a summary, results of the background checks, results of the professional references, other due diligence that we've done. So it's a full day.
Jim? Knowing that we want the public to be able to know, how do we advertise a regular session after the executive session when we have no idea when we're gonna get out? Could be a one hour deliberation, could be eight hour deliberation, or coming out of.
Regular session to follow.
Yeah, that's typically.
Or special session to follow in our case.
Very well put.
Yeah, it's.
And.
I guess we could, yeah, no, yeah.
Well, I would say, you know, typically that's a pretty quick announcement. We do have, have occasionally had members of the public attend, but we will also be assisting you in putting together a press release that can go out immediately after, so you can get the word out.
Oh, all right, Jim. I read it in here. Don't we have to let the candidate know before we tell everybody else?
Yeah, so what we'll be doing is during the executive session, after you've done your deliberations and had decided who you would like to, to move forward with, considering, I will step out and make a phone call to that individual and let them know and make sure that they are willing to accept before you formally announce them. Great questions.
Well, and also, if I might, I mean, you can announce it, who your preferred candidate is and that you are personally in contract. May get that or may not.
Yeah, that's true.
So that's the way it's typically handled.
Because I believe there was a city where it was like announced and it was like pending negotiations, and then that didn't happen. So then they went out and looked for another enter.
We don't like it, but thank you for, those are my magic words, are pending contract negotiations.
Oh, gosh.
So just for clarification, did you say the panel interviews, somebody said nine to four, but when you said panel interviews, were you talking about Wednesday, the twenty seventh, or Tuesday, the twenty sixth, or actually says panel interviews versus council interviews?
Yeah, so.
Council interview, despite all these.
Yeah, council. Yeah, so panel interviews, we, we won't. We won't be there. We should not be there. But council interviews, yeah, that's nine to four, the Wednesday, right?
Thursday is nine to whenever.
It'd have to be nine, doesn't it?
Hey, I'm very happy to come and attend. I'm not a boring person.
Oh, let's go ten. Yeah, ten's good.
That's helpful to know where the council falls on that, so.
Should we, should we have.
Are we here in ten? We, yeah, we can work with the boss to finalize the schedule, but.
We, yeah, Tyler's right. We have canoys. We can keep in mind maybe ten.
Yes.
We can shoot for ten, though, if that feels good.
Yeah, but don't book anything at nine. That's all we ask.
But those, the main thing is that day is gonna be. Yeah, yeah, fold.
Exactly. Yeah, and we'll be finalizing the schedule closer too with the locations. My colleague, Emily, who we've all communicated with at least a little bit, she's our operations manager. She puts down together the most detailed instruction packet that you could ask for, but we'll have all this information.
Is food involved?
Oh, yes, it is.
Oh, it is. I feel like we can't coordinate all these things. So I'm like, please, no meat. You feel like you planned a four day party when you're doing this, literally.
It is, yeah. That's a lot, but we ask a lot of our participants, you all included, so we wanna make sure that they're at least well fed.
Yes.
So you'll bring the food. It won't be sharing food, right? So you'll bring the food. It won't be sharing food, right?
We'll, we'll go right in.
But we, we.
It'll be, uh, coordinated.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we have, we have Subway and a pizza place, so.
We'll, we'll buy something yummy with the bond. I bet she is, that was last time.
Jim and Danny and Lucy probably remember. We had good food.
Good sandwiches.
Good, good sandwiches.
Okay. Okay, um, anything else on that?
No.
Any other questions?
Yeah. There's any other questions, I'm happy to, to answer them now or, um, after the session, but, uh, the last thing I'll leave you with is, uh, thank you. I have what I need to, uh, prepare a profile with you, for you, um, and look forward to, uh, formally kicking off this process. And the, um, last thing I'll leave with you is just a few commitments, um, things that you can, you can expect going forward. So first of all, we'll be keeping you informed along the way via, uh, your fantastic staff as well as, uh, the mayor. Um, as I mentioned, our job is to bring you qualified candidates. Unfortunately, you all have the harder job of choosing the next manager to really meet your needs. So we'll be busy, uh, promoting the position, trying to effectively advocate, uh, for your community and be a positive reflection of it. Um, we commit, and this is a, a strong firm commitment of ours, to treat all candidates with dignity and respect. Uh, whether that's staying informed or just how we engage with them. Um, and then finally, working to keep, to keep this process as smooth, um, effective and hopefully have a little bit of, of fun along the way as well if we can. So, thank you all, and that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Will we see the profile that you're creating? Will you mail it out to us or?
Absolutely, and I would love, uh, so we'll, we'll share it with you all and, um, that actually reminds me, thank you, Preston. Um, so any, uh, candidates that you think of, any places that you want to advertise, please feel free to let me know. I would love to reach out to them, communicate with them, et cetera. Um, you're welcome to, to share the flyer, um, but I'm happy to provide, um, interview questions that candidates have and solicit the applications. Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, um. Alright, next on the agenda is, uh, second, uh, public comment. Yvonne, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Um, okay, so next, uh, mayor counselor discussion, um, anybody have anything they wanna talk about? Oh, yeah, where did that, yeah, where did that come from?
Oh, Helen dropped those by and said, you know, she said that there was, it was model language, I think, for the dark sky thing. She wanted to teach the council to have.
Okay, so this is for us to review.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Information.
Um, I was gonna ask Yvonne, as far as I, I mean, I might be wrong, um, with, with the new Tyler Tech software, that it has something, some sort of alert system built in there.
I am so glad you asked that. We actually, oh, good. So, that, that was a piece that we had gone back and forth, um, even with our meters system. Remember when we were getting the new meters and, um, um, our city manager decided to go away from that route. And the biggest reason is because in this particular event, the only people who would have received the alerts are people, first of all, that opt in and only if you get a water bill. So if you're a resident here in town and you're a renter and you live in the apartments, that none of those people actually get a water bill. So when you think about it, we have six thousand people and, well, we'll say four thousand people moving around them, actual. You have four thousand people, but you only have fifteen hundred water bills going out or fifteen hundred connections. That tells you that there would be a big deficit of people who did not receive that. But Preston has some ideas for, um, I don't know if some of you recall, several years ago, uh, the county came and kind of talked to us about some of the pricing for reverse nine one one. And in this particular scenario, if we had had something like that, um, it probably would have gone a long ways to help us throughout this particular situation. Preston knows a little bit more about it because he's dealt with cities that actually have that. But, um, we're thinking about, uh, having Angela, our emergency management coordinator, um, kind of start navigating some of those because there's other things that, you know, look at the, the fire thing like Preston said at our staff meeting or flooding or some of those other situations that even if we had it with our billing software, it wouldn't reach very many people.
Yeah, it's almost kind of like, uh, maybe it is reverse nine one one, but I know sometimes I've gotten like alerts from things happening in Lincoln City, uh, to my phone, but I, I, you know, it's.
Yeah, like that Tillmook emergency, yes, I get those ones from the Tillmook Emergency Management, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if that's a reverse nine one one, but I mean, it, it doesn't hurt to have more people be aware. Um, it's just that it might not be super targeted, but I think that would work. Uh, go ahead, Jim.
What is the school system used?
Well, it's tied in with their, uh, information software, um, the student information software. So my closest comparison would be the billing software because that's, has people's information on it. But other than that, I don't think we have information on every single person. Living in town like we do, uh, the schools.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and then, and that's a, and that's a school specific thing. But they, they do make, um, applications kind of similar to that, but people have to opt into them. There's no, um, like, bridge between what the city has and what the software has, so. That, that's where the school's kind of unique is that it has in, information for every single student. And then so it takes that and can put it in another application and notify people. Uh, but the city doesn't have that unfortunately. If people wanted to opt in, I suppose they should, but it, they wouldn't reach everybody. But I think, I believe I was, this was prior to me being on council, at least, as was discussed. Um, it's a similar, maybe it was a, a reverse nine one one or some way to, to alert.
It was a number of years ago, yeah. I can, I, I honestly don't remember. I just remember, I think we all sucked in our breath at the, the cost of it. I was like, oh, thank you for the presentation. But then you realize the value in it when you go through something.
Right.
Yeah.
And we have wildfires. We could potentially have wildfires this summer.
Yeah, wildfires, um, prisoners, um, you know. Several different things that people. Uh, but several things that, you know, there's, yeah, we're flooding because we're.
Okay, now, I have another one like that and I get the words off the top of my head.
Yeah. Um, Preston, do you have anything on that system you want to share or do you want to give us like a?
Well, I remember spending about three day, three years shaming the county into getting, and that's nine one one. So other cities can take advantage of it. Uh, Sharon, Sharon is not one of those that has done it. But it offers, it offers a, a ability to customize it for many different localized issues. You know, it could be flooding, it could be wildfire, it could be neighborhood by neighborhood. So, uh, not, not exactly set on that yet. Um, but, uh, that is available in the county, so, no.
Uh, the cost?
Yes. It's like a one time fee and then you have a annual fee to keep up your enhanced nine one one abilities.
Okay, uh, Jim?
Well, I call it junk now, but I get a lot of stuff in my, uh, city email. And here's one from GoGo, uh, talking about notifications and alerts. You notify residents about water alerts, facility closures, trash recycling, local events announcements, road utility service alerts. I'm sure we'll qualify for water alerts if we want, if you have to do that. So there's at least one source that, uh, volunteers to let us all know what's going on.
Yeah, and that's when they've sent me some too. And, you know, it doesn't sound bad, as far as I know, it's an opt-in only thing for people. But it could be advertising.
We might have to go opt in because, uh, I don't know, but there's no, there's no list of.
Phone numbers, except for, for the reverse nine one one. I think there's, uh.
It's geographic.
It's geographic, yeah, so they push it out to the phone numbers in, in that geographical area.
Yeah, if you're in the area. Okay, well, if, if Angela's gonna be, you know, looking more into that, um.
Yes.
I know, I, I can share the other applications that have sent me emails like what they sent Jim, but, uh, because I know there's a few, um, but, and even just looking at what other cities do.
I, I know, um, I, what Preston's talking about, I know it's, I was literally in, um, Hawaii a couple of years ago and we're driving, we're in Honolulu and there was four of us in the car and all four of our phones went off at the same time. And it, it was a, a nine one one, a reverse nine one one that was saying there was going to be an imminent flood in the area and to, to seek safety because they were expecting like torrential rains. And we did, but it was like, and I was not from that area clearly. So I know that there's systems that work in that geographical manner. And so that's really kind of, even for a boil water notice, you know, people might think that's excessive. But if you're somebody who doesn't really have a lot of, um, options for, you know, if you're visiting and or renting someplace for a short time, you maybe haven't opted into anything.
Okay, um, okay, other discussion concerns from, anybody, Jim?
Uh, Preston, you said there were some other things that you're, were even more present than the water line. Great, can you share information on that, Phil?
Some of that I've emailed you. Uh, I'd say, no, but you need to talk to me privately.
Didn't want to answer your question.
Yeah. Alright, uh, other, oh, Lucy?
I think that, um, when we have executive sessions, you kind of know what's gonna happen, not, not like a spur of the moment one. It'd be nice if you asked the council if there's something that they'd like to talk about. Because a lot of times when you're in an executive session, and I know you love doing it, you can't talk about that. So, you know, I just put a little list of stuff that I'd like to talk about, and you can't shut me up.
I can't shut you up anyways.
Yeah. You try though. But it'd be nice because then we could talk about those things and be able to say in front of everybody.
That's it.
Yep, I'll bring it around. We were kind of discussing the fence on West Main. I'm kind of not here, the last thing I remember kind of saying is the, uh, the contractor that he had bid for that, is that, Preston, do you know?
I don't know. But I'm gonna find out though. Okay, anything else? Anybody? Like, we'll be meeting in two weeks, so.
Is it two?
June sixteen.
Oh, that's the first and third?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there is two weeks.
Yeah. Uh, okay, well, um, nobody had any vote else, um, did we, in adjournments, seven twenty-three?
I suck at it.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I skipped the vote part.
Democracy is.
Recording stuff.